Be bumped up to that ten thousand dollar per student. Low revenue ceiling, that is four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. So that takes into account the additional eight in the rolling FTE. Our per pupil adjustment aid remains at seven hundred and forty-two dollars. We're anticipating an increase in our open enrollment coming in of five full-time equivalency. We are also estimating an increase in our open enrollment tuition per the estimate that DPI has given us. From seven thousand, seven seventy-one this year to eight thousand, one twenty-five for next year. I based that off two hundred and seventy-six full-time equivalency for open enrollment. So that's an extra ninety-eight thousand. We have like three hundred and nine total right now.
How many will graduate?
But it's. Right, so we're anticipating that about sixty. I think we figured about sixty students will graduate. And that's why we didn't wanna increase the. What, the number that we're expecting to attend by too much, cuz I think last year we anticipated an extra twenty-five.
Yeah.
So you have to offset the sixty and you're saying we're gonna get sixty-five.
Right, right.
Got it, thank you.
We also assumed the four percent increase in our sped categorical aid that was in the governor's budget. That was approved and a one percent increase in all other revenues, which is a pretty minimal amount. Um, as far as the mill rate, we're anticipating a seven percent increase in the equalized valuation. And then we carried that out at seven percent and I'm sorry, that should say twenty twenty-one, not nineteen twenty. That is our five-year average. We also have uh included in fund thirty-nine, our debt service. An additional million dollar, million dollars for mill rate stability. So if you remember, this year we levied an additional five hundred thousand. Next year, we will levy an additional one million, twenty-three thousand. To prepay debt. And I believe Brian, is he coming in April? I'll have to look back.
So, or he's supposed to present you something, right?
I believe he's coming to the April meeting and to talk to us about the prepayment of the five hundred thousand for this year. So all total, we're looking at about eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in increased revenues for next year.
Per pupil adjustment aid stays the same, but we have more FTE?
Correct, so.
But that doesn't add in to your.
Sure, so that would be a little bit more than.
Okay.
By the eight FTE, yeah. Any other questions about the revenues?
Thirty-two hundred, there's both canoes.
But that's not till next year.
That's right.
Okay, moving on to expenditures for our object one hundred and two hundred series, so that's staff salary and benefits. Um, we had some positions that were added during the nineteen twenty fiscal year that were not a full-year position. So we did have to add about thirty-seven thousand dollars to make all of those positions a full year's worth. We have our two percent wage increase again, um, the July first twenty twenty CPI is one point eight one. We have gone with two percent as our low um in the past and if CPI is greater than that, we have honored that. So we are anticipating about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for that two percent increase. We will be having a staff retirement in January of twenty twenty-one. That we are anticipating that we will fill with a paraprofessional instead of a teaching position. So that will save us about forty thousand dollars next year. Our local retirement benefit. Is actually increasing in this year's budget, we had just shy of a hundred and seventy thousand set aside for local retirement benefit. Next year, it will increase to around two hundred and five thousand. So we need to add an additional thirty-six thousand for that. Health insurance premiums will increase in on January first of twenty twenty-one by nine percent. That's the second year of our three-year contract with Health Partners. And that is going to be about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
So annualized, that's a five hundred thousand dollar increase?
If no, because.
It's January.
No, because it's January.
January.
Cuz the teachers have eight months on the new rate. Some of those twelve-month support staff only have six months, so. We calculated out.
Still a big number.
It's still a big number.
Nine percent was the maximum we could go on.
Yes.
Did they give you an actual if we did not have the cap?
We probably would not know that until September.
Do they ever tell us what the, do they tell us what the actual would have been without the cap?
Usually August or September. They do, yeah.
And we've been below the cap a number, a couple of times also, they've raised it less than the max.
A few times.
Right, so two years ago, they raised it less than the cap. Because of some federal mandated fees that were removed. And so they gave us that benefit, I wanna say that was the year it was supposed to increase by nine and it went up by like six point eight or something.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and then. In twenty twenty, it was actually the third year of our contract with them, but because we renegotiated with them. They brought it down from the eleven percent that we had. So I'm thinking the possibility, considering our claims ratio at this point, it will be nine percent. Is what we're anticipating unless something happens with federal fees again, which I doubt, but.
And, and different conversation over through this.
Uh, health ins- or dental insurance, which is also with Health Partners, I'm anticipating a five percent increase for January twenty twenty-one. We came off a two-year contract with them on January first of this year and we increased six percent. So I'm thinking that should be pretty close, hopefully it comes in a little bit less than that. Long-term disability, I estimated a three percent increase. Vision, life and FICA, I had no increase for those. You will see a dollar amount there for FICA because um you know, it's a higher salary amount, so there is an additional cost there. Wisconsin retirement, I'm estimating a quarter percent increase. And now with everything that's been happening over the last few weeks, that may even be more than what we're anticipating, but. That's about twenty-three thousand that we built in. Any questions on salaries or benefits?
So except for the. Partial year extensions to the. We haven't had any new headcounted staff.
Right, so I kinda put that down at the bottom, so we'll talk about it. These are the things that are in this portion are like the essential. Items and then I have a separate category down at the bottom that we'll talk about in a minute.
And the local retirement, that's a percentage base, right?
Yes, it is.
That's what it goes up.
So all of our other objects, um, of course, we're gonna prepay that debt. If we're levering, levying an extra million dollars, we'll use that to prepay debt for the million dollars. Um, estimating a two percent increase in our insurance budgets, like unemployment and student insurance and most types of things. Um, two percent in our utility budgets, except for water, I did increase by twenty-five percent. Because Robert's rates are going up quite a bit for sulfur water and sewer. Um, postage and telephone increased by two percent. We have soccer included in there with all the startup fees, we're estimating fifty thousand. Last year, we had increased our facilities acquisition to this sixty-six thousand, six ninety-nine because of some weird things that happened. Um, so we wanted to get that up to seventy-five thousand, so that will be twenty-five then per building. An increase in classroom supply budgets, we just set aside ten thousand dollars. Um, it seems like each year the principals have different needs, so we try to accommodate some of those. And then our fund balance in order to maintain our seventeen percent, we are looking at about a hundred and forty thousand. And then again, our open enrollment out, same number of students, but that increased rate from that DPI estimate. So with those things, we're at about eight hundred and seventeen thousand. And increased expenditures. So some of the other things then, we have about sixty-five thousand dollars to work with. Um, we talked about adding a one FTE support staff position. Um, that actually probably would be a combination of a couple different things. Or it could be also enough to add a point seven five, point eight percent um teaching staff position. And one thing to note that as of right now, there is no additional bus in the budget.
So Jen, question on that prepayment of debt for mill rate stability at million twenty-three thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is that a excess levy that's mandatory to be used for debt relief? Or, uh, I'll just make it up. Can we use nine hundred and twenty-three thousand for the debt relief and it doesn't stabilize us quite as much, but. Um, and then you have a hundred thousand dollars by a bus, for example.
So no, we can't.
Okay.
That's the short answer. Um. We, this year, we levied the additional five hundred thousand, we are able to do that for debt service only.
Got it, thank you.
Because when we. Went to the taxpayers to take out the debt, we asked them if we could borrow twenty-five million dollars. We didn't ask them each year how much we could levy to prepay that back. So if we're going to levy any extra, it has to prepay back debt or we would be considered overlevied. And we'd receive a penalty in the following year.
Got it, just clarifying.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Look what that does is prepays debt, so that when we go to a referendum, it's already prepaid, so we can.
Absolutely, so our numbers look, our numbers are.
Right, we're in a favorable position.
Borrow money without increasing the tax.
Absolutely.
So, um, met with Brian and Pete, you know, on, again, today, they just asked again to advocate for two new buses. We haven't bought any buses in three years. Brian, uh, brags and he's never failed a test, but he says, I can, I can make a banana pass the bus inspection because.
And I have.
I've done a lot of welding. Welding and you know, there's rust areas, especially in the step well and he says it's starting to become a safety issue with, you know, a couple buses, so we don't, yeah, want that, so. I said, I would pass it on.
Right.
So, you know, obviously.
What's his view of lease versus buy? Because we've gone both ways as a.
Doesn't matter, so he has a new bus. He, he just wants a new bus. Um, I, I feel you get more buses for, you know, same amount of money and maybe, you know, uh, it's a better catch-up proposal.
To lease rather than.
To lease, I mean, yeah, you can lease.
Lease to own, that's what we usually did, right?
Right.
Um, so.
Well, you, yeah, you basically own it at the end of the lease.
At the end of the five-year lease, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you overpay by about fifteen thousand or so.
Yeah, I mean, the interest rates are pretty good, they treat them just like a whole one.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, so again.
And what's our life, what life do we get?
These are, the two worst ones are sixteen years old.
Yeah.
And, which are parked outside in that rotation, right, so they're gonna get even, you know, better.
He wasn't saying that he was expecting at that time parking outside twelve fifteen is pushing it.
Right.
And they're not outside anymore, so they should. Hopefully use it for twelve fifteen.
Well, so this would just replace two buses, it's not adding to the fleet.
Correct.
Right.
Which we don't need to add to.
So it's our two worst buses on.
So, but one in the demolition derby and.
And does the administration have a recommendation as between these options?
Yes, both. Um, just with the buses though, again, end, end of the fiscal year, right, money becomes available, but it gets really challenging though when Jen says, oh, we've got, you know, cuz we have to receive. The, 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 the capital that we purchased prior to July one if we pay for this, so that gets to be tricky. That's a, you know, cuz you like to spend that on a one-time thing like that, right, rather than, that doesn't really help for staffing in the next year, so.
No, but can you get your bus lease or leases taken care of with end of year?
Ideally, that would be that buses take care of that and staffing for next year, do both, that's how we potentially do both.
But you still have to put your second-year payment in that for your bus lease.
Correct.
What probably would work out better is if we have money available at the end of the year. Using that to prepay on the local retirement benefit.
That's what we've done before.
Then we can reduce the amount that we need in our budget for local retirement benefit next year. And that will free up.
Use that to, that.
And then those go to other items.
Could go to a bus.
And that keeps.
So that would reduce that two hundred and four thousand dollar obligation next year.
Yes, yes.
And it keeps you from having to receive the bus, yeah, Joe.
Right, right, cuz a lot of times they take, you know, a good six to eight weeks to come in, so it does.
But even if it's a lease and not a purchase, you still have to physically receive it on the lease by a certain date.
Right, we have to physically receive the bus and use it in service, so it has to be early enough that we can use it for a summer school road or something.
In the fiscal year then.
To say that we have placed it in service.
But to the extent.
Deliver a lunch.
You play, you do your magic and we can do both. We do both by prepaying or the local retirement benefit.
And get that tool forwarded then.
Ordering the bus for delivery next year.
Yeah.
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 And as between support staff and additional teaching staff, do you need to make that choice tonight or?
No, no, it's a line item right now, the admin can make that.
Okay.
Pretty, pretty good idea.
What do you need from us both?
I guess the class got a couple of questions yet, uh, do we have enough to bolster our virtual ed program in this budget?
That would be if we add the support staff or the teaching staff, um, both of those are kind of the virtual education piece.
We'd like to do more.
Yeah.
Currently, as it sits for fall, I don't have an English teacher. So we have to do something for the high school English students.
Okay.
Or that money will have to go towards that.
Well, it could be the point seven five.
Right, but that's, the point seven five is a, is a dollar figure, not a need. That's how much we can afford, not how much we need, yeah.
Okay, the second question that I have is, uh, we're increasing. Classroom supplies by ten thousand dollars, is that. Adequate for, to get us, uh, through what we need, or is there? Do we have to add more?
Yeah, in our opinion, yes, depends who you talk to, you know, and see, you know, there's some folks that, yeah.
Always.
Right, Bill would say.
But this, we got the big picture, the whole picture, you know, we've got so much pie.
So we're just starting to get the building budgets back from the principals. So as those come in here over the next few weeks, we'll have a better idea to what that number looks like.
Okay. We need a bigger pie or more pies?
We always need more pies.
I think with Saturday.
What if we get a bus for the virtual?
Approximately.
Can you put it into.
For a virtual bus, a virtual bus.
Okay, is there anything else on Jen?
That's it.
Okay.
Good work, thank you. It's amazing how you do this. Although you kinda have the template down though, right?
I have the template down, so that helps a lot.
Just need better numbers.
Yeah.
Well, every time you look at, you know, we're working on bold revenue ceilings and it increases us by four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, I don't know how many years.
Without that.
Without that, have we been going, right, you know, I mean, it's millions and millions of dollars, so.
Almost.
It's where we are today, we've continued to educate our kids, but, uh. It just kinda pokes you every time you look at them.
Well, and it's hard, and Tim and I had a discussion about the cost of health insurance. You know, three years ago, when we negotiated a three-year contract with Health Partners for seven, nine and eleven percent caps. That was a much lower amount than our seven, nine and eleven percent caps are on this three-year contract. You know, just because the costs have gone up.
Gone up, right, it's a bigger number every year.
And. It's a bigger number every year, so we're gonna have to get a handle on that, I think.
Okay.
After this contract is up.
Okay. Can we move on, is there any other business that we have to address at this time? Couple of notes, uh. The Joint Board of Education PAC meeting with Randy Fox that was scheduled for April first has been canceled. So that will not take place. Moving on, uh. I guess I would recommend if this one takes place, it's yet to be seen, but Brian, uh, you might wanna make a note on your calendar. That there is a new school board orientation gathering scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-first. Uh, at the Durant Arkansas High School in Durant, and I usually go to that, so. More than one carpool, I can drive you down there, introduce you to some of the people down there. We'll get to meet some of the new board members and, uh, some of the other boards in, uh, District Four. Which is our WASB, Scotts Association of School Boards, uh, District, so. Okay. Okay, and then, uh, there will, I think it is, there is another workshop. Scheduled for May, I believe thirteenth at CISA eleven at Turtle Lake, but.
Is that the legal one?
Yeah.
That's a good one, the legal one.
So, well. Chris went up there first year also. It's kinda bang-bang, couple of meetings right away, but, uh, they're good meetings and that can get you a good footing. So.
So Howard, just a question about this, uh, I don't know if it's a recommendation, I think it is, from the governor about public gathering.
Mm-hmm.
And not exceeding, I had heard fifty and someone said, now it's ten?
Ten is.
Ten is what the federal is, uh, recommending at this time, but it's still fifty at the state level.
Thought it was only in the community, community spread states too, like New York, California and Washington. I haven't seen clarification.
So do we need to clarify, are we able to conduct, um, district business if we need to meet virtually through like a dial-in or through a.
Zoom meeting?
Video chat, Zoom type meeting? Or do we need to be physically present to conduct official business?
Do you know what's on your end, Pam?
There, no, I don't, but I mean, there is, we do have a policy on that.
We'll look into that.
I, yeah, it talks.
Just, you know, right now, I think, you know, you can see we're.
Need a bigger rule.
Not much over, uh, ten as is, but, uh, there are times that we fill up with administrators and others. I just, I wanna know what our options are if we need to make that kind of decision.
I think, I think for policy, we'll probably need to update that, but. That'll be something to look into.
Actually, actually, we should get clarification from DPI at what is going to constitute a legal meeting.
Or if WASB.
Yeah, WASB, whomever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of places are saying, and when possible, consider virtual options, I just don't know if we can.
If legally you can.
Right, and open meeting laws and those types of things, you know, so if, if we meet virtually, you have to make it possible for people to.
We can do virtual, but we would have to have somebody physically here. Or anybody else that would walk off the street.
Let's just figure out, I'm not gonna speculate, I'm, I'm simply gonna ask the question, let's do the, the right.
And I'm just, I'm just stating what we do for CISA eleven, so. So. Okay.
So Kirk's coming to the meeting, sees Nigeria to defend himself.
Okay, important upcoming dates, as we said, April first meeting at CISA eleven has been canceled. April sixth is our next, uh, board learning special meeting, starting at six P M. Here at the district office. April twentieth is our. Next regularly scheduled, uh, regular board meeting here at seven P M in the district office. And we'll have the new, uh, board orientation, new member orientation meeting on the twenty-first. That's at Durant. Is there any other dates that we've got?
Sorry, the question, what, what if, what if we postpone the election? Like Ohio just did.
That's come up in my, that's come up in my household already, Brian, but.
And John's.
At this point, I don't foresee it, I think they are strongly recommending absentee ballots, so.
But in this case, that would be.
Legit.
Yeah.
I mean, say that again.
Truly, we could, I could, uh, I, I, well, I wouldn't have to resign because my term would have ended, you would have a vacant seat. And the board can appoint until.
You'd probably have to resign because the vacancy would be, wouldn't happen until the election, is how they would. Your vacancy doesn't end on the date, it ends at the election.
I don't know. The second thing to talk to WASB about, yeah.
But you could resign and we could appoint.
We won't be the only school.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, I think it's still possible because.
Something right now, we're just saying, uh, bubble check.
You don't get out of that easy.
You only need one vote, Brian.
To halt the election right now is going to be immensely problematic because absent, absentee ballots have already been sent out, so.
I can still submit a letter of resignation on April sixth.
So.
He's still in. He would just.
We could.
If you had a vacancy, you're gonna point it.
He would sit until the next election.
We'd appoint till.
The next election, whenever they call it.
Right.
So.
I think we're speculating and, uh, we don't have enough information.
Let's just talk it through and see what it is. As long as you're calling very.
So, okay. Is there any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session. Per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five one F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies. Which if discussed in public, would likely have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person and referred to in such histories. Or data or involved in such problems or investigations. This has to do with our student assessment exemption requests, so.
Who can go into closed session?
Second, aye.
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 Okay.
Take like two minutes.
Okay, we got the doors, we got the doors closed.
Closed enough.
Okay.
Nick's gonna present the shortest presentation ever in the history of S C board meetings.
I don't agree with that one, Mark.
The end.
Is the video off?
Hold it.